Let's pray. God, we thank you for today. God, we thank you for just the blessing it is to wake up in this country, in this state, in this county. God, right now, I just pray for every citizen of this country as they deal with different hardships. God, we pray that we're all able to realize that you're bigger than any hardship that any of us are going through. God, I ask that you change our hearts where they need to be changed. God, that we pour the love of your son that lived here on all people and that we can join together and lift each other up. God, I pray for our meeting today, that these decisions are made with you in mind, with your kingdom in mind, and with the heart of Christ. We pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and call Marsh County Fiscal Court to order November 10th, 2020. Joe's not here this morning. I was gonna wish him my happy birthday.
Was it 102?
Two forty-five, I think.
Two hundred and forty-five?
I think. We don't have any guests. Under correspondence, October Personnel Change.
It's October 2020. Personnel changes. New hire, part-time election officers, all paid at $11 per hour. Carola, Caroli? Darnold?
Carola.
Carolyn? Carolyn?
Carola.
Carola. Thank you. I told you there was no names I was gonna mix up, but there you go, number one. Effective 10/1/2020, Gordon Griffin, effective 10/1/20. Marcia Penny, effective 10/1/20. Angela Smith, effective 10/16/20. Joseph Morris, full-time deputy jailer, effective 10/14/20 at $13 per hour. James Harris, part-time animal shelter, effective 10/12/20 at $10.55 an hour. Jonah Williams, part-time to full-time deputy jailer, effective 10/16/20. Tim Beck, full-time to part-time deputy jailer, effective 10/16/20. Rachel Opiola, full-time dispatch, wage increased to $17.69, effective 10/6/20. Jamie Spears, full-time dispatch, wage increased to $16.50, effective 10/6/20. Roger Youngblood, part-time deputy jailer, effective 10/30/20 at $13 per hour.
Under old business, approved the minutes of October 20th meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will, Jason's on a conference call, so we'll wait. We'll just table this item until he gets back. Just need a motion to table this until he gets back. This is a quick claim deeds for Bright Lane. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, proclamation, First Responders Appreciation Month. We usually do this every year. I'll just read this. Marsh County Fiscal Court, proclamation, First Responders Appreciation Month. Whereas first responders include professional and volunteer fire, police, emergency medical technician, and paramedic workers in the United States. Whereas first responders risk their own lives and safety in the execution of their duties to protect the public on a daily basis. And whereas first responders are the first line of defense for the public against threats both domestic and foreign. And whereas first responders experience extreme physical demands and hazardous situations that contribute to personal injury or death, including gunfire, vehicle or accidents, and assaults. Whereas first responders experience high levels of stress and many struggle with mental health issues such as post-traumatic stress disorder, which family members of first responders have often develop. And whereas thousands of first responders have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas first responders deserve to be recognized for their commitment to safety, defense, and honor. And whereas first responders stand at the ready-to-come-to-aid of the citizens of Marsh County 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas first responders are a vital part of our community, not only standing ready to deal with emergencies, but also volunteering in our schools and community organizations. And whereas we recognize and honor all first responders who put their lives on the line daily to serve and protect the people of Marsh County, Kentucky. And therefore, the Marsh County Fiscal Court does hereby proclaim the month of November, First Responders Appreciation Month in Marsh County, given on my hand this 10th day of November 2020. And I'm gonna go ahead and add that we forgot that the court acknowledged our 911 employees as first responders. And it's not on here. I think that was last year when we approved Item B, change order, Travis Construction. Motion on the change order for Travis Construction.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. C, siren contract. This is gonna be with Marsh County Fiscal Court. Jason drafted this. It's for the Emergency Management Office. The Fiscal Court's gonna do a lease agreement with Olive United Methodist Church. And we have a siren. And I'm just gonna go through this and read this. I think West Kentucky Rule Electric's gonna donate the pole that the siren's gonna go on. This is a lease agreement. This lease agreement made and entered into by and between Marsh County Fiscal Court, here and after referred to as tenant, and Olive United Methodist Church, here and after referred to as landlord. Whereas landlord desires the lease to the tenant, the property more particularly described to wit a mutually agreed upon location on a portion of the real property owned by landlord located near the intersection of Old Olive Road and Olive Hamlet Road in Marsh County, Kentucky. Said lease property to be sufficient in size and order to install and maintain an emergency weather siren by the tenant. And whereas the tenant desires to lease the property under the following terms and conditions, more particularly set out here and after witness, under the following terms and conditions, all of which the parties agree are material covenants and conditions, and landlord does hereby demise and lease to the tenant the property set out above the term. The lease shall be for a period of one year, beginning on the first day of December 2020 and terminating the 30th day of November 2021. Said lease term being automatically renewable for another like term unless either party gives 30 days' advanced written notice of intent not to renew to the other party. Rent, the tenant shall use the demised premises for the installation and maintenance of an emergency weather siren capable of warning community members of pending or imminent dangers. Insurance, the tenant shall be solely responsible for the insuring the weather siren and any and all associated equipment accompanying the weather siren, including but not limited to the pole or other supporting structures, support wires, electrical wiring, and other associated electrical equipment. The tenant shall provide the maintained liability insurance policies for the lease premises against liability arising out of use and operation of the lease premises due to bodily injury, deaths, and property damage in a minimum amount of $1 million. The tenant shall provide a copy of the liability insurance policy, which shall carry a 30-day notice of cancellation clause to the landlord. The landlord shall be responsible for insuring the lease premises except any personally, any personality placed therein by the tenant in such amounts as the landlord may determine will adequately replace the lease premises. Sublease or agreement, item four, the tenant may not sublease any part of the rented premises or assign this lease without the written consent of the landlord. And in the event any assignment or sublease is made, the tenant shall remain responsible under the terms and conditions of this lease. Item five, partial or total destruction. Should the lease premises be substantially or totally destroyed by fire, the elements, or otherwise so as to render the premises unfit for the tenant's occupancy, either party shall have the option to cancel the remaining portion of the lease or any extended period or term thereof by giving the other party written notice thereof within 30 days after such destruction. Item six, cross waiver of subgration. The landlord hereby releases the tenant. Any assigns and subleases, and tenant, any assigns or sublease, releases landlord from any, from and against any and all claims, demands, liabilities, or obligations whatsoever for damage to the property, per loss of rents or profits of either landlord-tenant and assigns resulting from or in any way connected with fire, accident, or other casualty in the building, whether or not such fire accident or other casualty shall have been caused by the negligence or contributory negligence of the landlord-tenant or assigns, to the extent that such damage or loss is either insured under any insurance contract, which at the time of such damage or loss permits waiver of subgration rights prior to the loss thereunder or was to be insured against by the provisions of the first paragraphs of this section. Item seven, legal use only. The tenant shall use the lease premises for a legal purpose, and any violation of this covenant shall be considered a material violation of the terms and conditions of this lease. Item eight, servability. In the event anyone or more of the provisions contained in this agreement shall be held to be invalid, illegal, and constitutional, unconscionable, or enforceable in any aspect. The validity, legality, or enforceability of the remaining provisions of the agreement shall not be affected or impaired in any way thereby. Further, it is agreed between the parties that any provision deemed as such will be applied to the fullest extent so as to avoid the illegal or unconscionable result. Item nine, counterparts. This agreement may be executed in any number of counterparts, each of which shall be deemed an original, but all of which together shall constitute one and the same instrument. Ten, scope of agreement. This agreement shall be binding upon the successors, heirs, and assigns of the parties, and can only be amended by assigned writing properly executed by both parties. Either party may terminate this agreement for any reason by providing at least 30 days' advanced written notice of intent to terminate. Item eleven, contract interpretation. Should any provisions of this agreement require judicial interpretation, the parties here to agree that the court interpreting or construing the same shall not apply at presumption that the terms hereof shall be more strictly construed against one party by reason of the rule of construction that a document is to be construed more strictly against the party who itself or through its agents prepared the same. So that's the lease agreement, and we're looking to get that, if the court goes into this agreement and get that completed, the agreement anyways.
Brad, do you have that in the mouth that?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of showed everybody that the lack of coverage that's out there right now in terms of the weather siren, why we wanna put it there?
And you can see, is that a mile radius?
That's a mile radius that you're on those. And depending on the trees and where it is, it can go further or shorter.
A lot of folks out there had concerns that there's a weather event. Siren at Fair Dayland. I know I've lived out there, and you'd have to be outside and really listening to be able to hear it at Fair Dayland. So it'd be good to have one right there at Olive Road. They're also, like Judge said, West Kentucky Rule Electric. We gotta thank them for dominating the poles and doing the electrical work for it, so.
And then obviously, you don't see Calvert's in there because they have their own.
I know Wade is out right now doing some worker. He would've presented this, but there's some other areas you can see where those rings show lack of coverage. And I think he's got another one that he'll probably be presenting to us here pretty soon, as far as covering some areas that are, have lack of coverage.
It's something I've been advocating for for a while, so I'm glad Wade is.
That'll put us at seventeen. So we just need an action on this lease agreement.
I move to approve.
There is a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, county clerk's claim for preparing tax bills. Did y'all get a copy of this? From Tim York, total number of tax bills prepared, 23,408 at 30 cents each for $7,022 and 40 cents. One half to be paid by Commonwealth Kentucky, which is $3,511.20 total. It's $3,512.70.
Move, we approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I just wanna say, you know, Tim York and his staff and the pole workers, the great job that they done during this election. I mean, it was, they did a top-notch job for throwing the curveball like they were thrown. They did a good job, so they need props for that.
Definitely was a unusual election.
Yeah.
Not so much for Kentucky, but. Election going well? Let's entertain a motion to bring the quick claim deeds off the table.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're back under old business, item B, quick claim deeds for Bright Lane.
Okay, so we're going to travel back in time to the year 2000. I think Anita was still in high school.
Conan O'Brien, that's what it was.
For the record, I was in eighth grade in 2000.
Erica, were you born in 2000?
No, in eighth grade.
Okay. So what happened is, back in, what was the date on this? February the 19th of 2000, a quick claim deed was tendered to the Fiscal Court for Bright Lane. And there's two tracts of property on here. Those are described pursuant to a survey from James E. Stevenson. And the grantors at that time were Terry Braden and Margie Braden. They signed it. Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, but the court voted to accept that. And it's in the minutes. But it was never executed by the grantee, which was the Marsh County Fiscal Court. Judge Miller didn't sign it, and it was never recorded. And Bright Lane has been part of the Marsh County road system since, and it's been consistently maintained by the department for over 20 years at this point. So I think it came to light because somebody had, somebody along the roadway had sold the property or was getting ready to buy the property, and then this issue.
Title opinion?
Yeah, came up in a title opinion. Yep. So what we need to do is just reaffirm the court's willingness to accept this old quick claim deed. And then there have been two parties along the roadway that bought subsequent to this deed. So if we can get them to sign off on the quick claim deed as well, then that should clear everything up as far as the title's concerned. So we could entertain a motion to affirm the old quick claim deeds from Terry Braden and Rita Winters.
Move, we affirm.
And give Judge Neal the authority to execute these.
I second that.
I move that we do all that.
Okay. So the motion is to affirm the old quick claim deeds for Bright Lane.
So some of those were signed by Judge Miller. He just didn't, oh, none of them? All those quick claim?
There were two.
Oh, it was just two? Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Oh, oh, I got you. Got you. Okay. I wondered, I mean, there's a whole lot on the petition. Okay, I got you. All right. So I move to affirm. Acceptance of that quick claim deed and give Judge Neal the authority to sign that.
Yep. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And we'll need to record this original deed, or this original survey plat. Need to record that.
And it was the, it ended up being that entire thousand feet, right, all the way back, I think. Because it was, at one time, the, I think the guys said that they approved back to 600 or something like that, but then found out, I guess, that the house was built, at the end was built more than 15 years from that, and so it extended all the way.
Southside of Bright, at the Ford Kerry right.
I think the approval, I mean, I'm just making sure, but I think the approval based on that was 1,058 feet, so.
We have it at 1,100 feet.
All right. We'll go to item E, Treasurer's Office New Hire.
I have a new hire to present to replace our part-time that left. Her name is Brittany Wenzel, or Wenzel. Hopefully, I don't butcher that last name, Wenzel. And I wanna hire her at $13 an hour, which is what's budgeted for, for that position.
This is a part-time position.
Move, we approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, transfers.
I have an occupational tax transfer here to the general fund of $200,000, and that is budgeted. And then I have a transient tax transfer of $19,890.28.
Move, we approve the transfer.
Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any reason to deny payment of the bills and claims? Hearing none. Let the clerk record that the bill and claims are to be paid. Item H, before we go into H, because I don't know how long it's gonna take, we've got about four minutes. We can't start the public hearing before 10:00. So won't we just take a recess until 10:00, and we'll start the public hearing? Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and so at 11:00 a.m. tomorrow at the Veterans Plaza, we will be celebrating Veterans Day tomorrow.
Motion for recess.
There is a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we were going to the public hearing for Walton Lane. Are there anybody, is there anybody here to speak on behalf of Walton Lane? Come on up, Brad. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank Judge Neal and the members of the court for having us today.
My name is Brad Anderson, and my wife, Amy, sitting in the black jacket. We live at the dead end of Walton Lane. We've had some serious issues with Walton Lane for the past couple of years now. It was redone up to a certain point to our property line, and the maintenance was cut off there. The road is in terrible, terrible shape. I've come today to propose a solution to the court and to see if that would be acceptable. What my wife and I would like to see done is that road from my neighbor, John Johnson, from the property lineup to our house be closed. It's approximately 650, 700 feet long. What I would like to see done, I spoke with Judge Neal extensively about a few weeks ago in his office. I would like to see that blacktop removed or ground up, I think is an option, and left for a base, and a gravel road, white rock gravel road, put back in place by the county, that I will maintain from here on. The county doesn't have to do any maintenance whatsoever. I'll assume that responsibility from here on out. And I think that request is a much more feasible of a request than another option that was brought up as widening the road and ditching and blacktopping and so forth, which I wanna guess is upwards of $100,000 could be to the taxpayers. That goes nowhere except to my driveway. I don't see that to be a feasible option. I would just like the county to remove the blacktop that they put down several years ago and just put a passable gravel road back that I will assume the responsibility on from here on.
Okay. And just so that folks know, in a public hearing, there's no action. So by law, we have to ask if there's anybody here and if there's anybody here against. So Mr. Anderson, obviously, filed a petition, is here for this petition. We did put a road review. I do wanna, I'm just gonna read this. I don't think, unless anybody has any questions for Brad. Do you have any?
Let's, if we don't mind, why don't we read the report from the viewers, and then we can ask Mr. Anderson if that matches up with what his request is.
Okay. So this is October 16th, 2020. This is in reference proposed discontinuation of county maintenance of a portion of Walton Lane. At the October 6, 2020, Marsh County Fiscal Court regular meeting, the Fiscal Court appointed road viewers in response to a petition to discontinue a portion of Walton Lane. Advertisement for a public hearing was placed in the October 27th, 2020 issue of the Marsh County Tribune Carrier Journal. The public hearing is to receive comments either for or against the county discontinuing county road maintenance 575 feet from the end of Walton Lane towards U.S. Highway 641. Notice for the hearing was also posted at the following locations, Marsh County Courthouse at the end of Walton Lane, and two other various sections of Walton Lane. County Road Superintendent Roy Watkins and appointed road viewers Brad Warning and Andrew Lepisto all viewed the road during this onsite inspections between October 6, 2020 and October 15, 2020. The following observations were made. Walton Lane is located 1.15 miles northeast of U.S. Highway 68. The road is approximately 0.75 miles, which is 3,960 feet in length, 18 feet in width from what the county would continue to maintain, and 11 feet in width of the portion being proposed to be discontinued. Walton Lane begins from U.S. Highway 641 and terminates in a dead end. Walton Lane is made of bitumenous surface material, and the section that is being proposed, the takeout of the county road maintenance system is in very poor condition. Based on the information presented and the observations made during the inspections, we would recommend the discontinuation of county road maintenance of Walton Lane, beginning approximately 575 feet from the end of lane, of the end of the lane traveling towards U.S. Highway 641. We do not believe We do not believe this would cause any hardships or inconvenience to any properties directly affected, and that was submitted by Roy Watkins, Brad Warning, and Andrew Lepstow. Are there, are there any questions from the court with Mr. Warning? I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't hear in there anything about replacing with, with the gravel. That's what, that is a concern of mine, and I want to clarify that, that road be returned back to a passable road for, for a car. You know, my wife's car now, we've already had to replace an oil pan, it's busted a tire, and there's a piece of plastic hanging off of it right now, from having to negotiate the terrible road. So, what I'm asking, I think, is in lieu of the widening like the rest of Walton Lane, we're talking about pennies on the dollar, so that's for the taxpayers, that, that's all that I'm asking.
And, and I don't, go ahead.
This, this hearing is just to determine, not to determine today, but to hear evidence either in favor of keeping it open or closing it.
Yeah.
Right, but that's, that is a stipulation of, of mine, as far as me wanting to close it, that, that be done, so.
Well, if it's closed, we can't perform work on property we don't own.
Right, so I'm asking you to close it after you do that.
I, I don't think that's doable.
So, so the.
We can't improve property and then turn it over to a private party.
So, if you widen it, and then a petition to close it?
The, what we're here today is to determine, not to determine, again, but to hear evidence either in favor of closing it or in opposition to closing it, and that's it.
So, the, the next meeting, we can go into more detail a, as far as Walton Lane?
What, what, we vote on whether to keep it open or close it?
Yeah. So, excuse me, so the vote would be to close or not to close in its current condition? If it was closed at that point, whatever condition it's in would be the responsibility of the Andersons, is that correct?
Correct.
That won't be acceptable.
We can't, we can't do work on private property, Brad.
You already have. That road was placed on private property, Jason.
That's, that's in dispute, that's in dispute, that's.
You can, you can go out there right now and bring me the proof that that belongs to the county.
Well, we're not, we're not going to argue that today.
Okay, well, I'm just stating on, on television, you already have performed work on private property, and I can name off several examples, but this one seems to stand out differently than those examples. So, I'm just making my feelings known today, so y'all can move forward.
Do you want to stick with your petition?
I want to stick with what I just requested.
Your petition was to close it, is that what you're asking for?
My petition is to close it, like I spoke with Judge Neal in his, in his office several weeks ago, with stipulation.
There is no stipulation, it's, it's open or close.
Well, I had the conversation.
Open or close, do you want to, do you want to stick with your petition, yes or no?
The, the, and, and like we talked, I do not have the authority.
I understand.
To make any decision. The public hearing is the, the legal and proper way for this road. Getting your road closure to the court was the first step, and as counsel is saying that, I mean, that's, if that's the law, the court has to take that in consideration. As far as the public hearing, the way I'm, I'm understanding it, this is the process that we have to take for closing or taking a road into the county maintenance system.
So, what Mr. Darnold's asking right now, if I want to stick with the proposal, so you're giving me the option to withdraw that, am I understanding that correctly?
This is the time where folks either state their position in favor or against.
Well, if you're going, if you're going to leave me with the horrendous mess that's out there, I withdraw it, and then we'll move forward with, with another solution. But, we're not donating land for a right of way for another widening project to my mailbox. We're not doing that. The county, Marshall County Road Department came in there several years ago and constructed this road without the permission of my father, encroached on private property, and did that. Now, if you wanted it to be that width, you should have taken that width to begin with, but you did not. You took what you got, so the option that we've discussed was resurface what you have and no more, or close it with the gravel. Those, those are the two options that I'll live with.
It, it's, it's not an option, it's a process. This is the legal process, as we discussed. I don't have the authority, neither one of them have the authority individually to make any decisions, but the process to get it in front of the court is to file a petition, and, and you did that, but, I mean, counsel's advice to the court is that we can't, and today's hearing is just like the counsel said, it's for those for and those against. And obviously, if, if we can't do work on a, on private property, no matter what was discussed, I mean, that's, that's from what I'm hearing, that's, that's the law. I mean, we can't, we can't do that. Yeah.
It's been to Walton Lane?
Say all of us.
Okay, great. So, you've seen the kind of shape that it's in. We are, we don't care if it's closed or if it's open, we want the best solution for the road. Obviously, for the taxpayers, it's not, it doesn't make any sense to make it twenty feet wide for one property back there, and we are the only property, the only home back there, and likely, probably ever, the only home that will ever be back there. So, if closing the road, Mr. Darnold, is, I mean, I understand what the hearing today is for, so the next court meeting is when you all would vote yes to close it, or no, not to close it, is that correct?
Yes.
Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, no, I mean, if, if the county will fix the road, which is what we've been begging for, for months, then we don't have to close it. It's, I mean, we'll leave it open, and, and you guys can come and knock snow off of it, and it'll be easier for me to get to work, and for Brad too. But, if closing it gets us, you know, no blown tires, no oil pans, then, then we'll close it. We, we want to do what's best for us and for our family as taxpayers of this county. I understand the process, Judge Neal, I do, but, I mean, I have reached out to each of you individually and together to get something done, so what we want to see as taxpayers of this county is do something. You know, each of you, this is a public hearing, and I understand we can't make a decision today, but we've been asking for decisions to be made for a very long time. Each of you have teen, teen drivers, we have three. I'm not interested in my teen driver having a blowout at seventy-eight miles an hour on I-24 like I did recently, because it might not go so well. So, men and women of this court, do something about Walton Lane. Yes, we're the only people back there, but the last time I checked, we've paid taxes too. So, please, no, we don't want to close the road, Mr. Darnold, we withdraw, we withdraw closing the road, but what we want to see is this court to do something, you all are elected officials of this county, and you have a right to do something for its people, regardless of Republican or Democrat or history, I, I don't care, I ha, I wasn't born and bred in Marshall County, I came from somewhere else. I can't understand a group of people who are not willing to vote three out of four of you to fix it. So, no, we withdraw, we do not want to close the road, we just want Marshall County to come out and fix the road like any other taxpayer in this county deserves, please.
And, and I just, I just want to make sure that, on the defense of the court, the, the county did come out, and the landowner refused to sign, which they can. The, the Walton Lane was actually from other residents, the request from other residents to widen it. The county came, the road department came out, they went through that process to, to widen that.
No one ever got out and asked me, who lives at Walton Lane, and I was in the driveway with you and the other members of the court, and no one asked me what I wanted, and I live there. I've been voting in this county for many years, so, I'm sorry, no one from the court came to my house and asked me what I wanted. If you spoke to my father-in-law, who owns dirt on the other side of the road, I, I can't help what he wants.
Okay, and, and I understand, I understand we've been through this and the frustration, but the, the, the road department, in, in trying to improve our roads, and widening certain roads, and we've got many roads that are in that condition, there are set requirements that the state transportation lays out, so it, it's not just a matter of just widening it. Property owners who have an interest, just like we just witnessed earlier, they have to give permission. If they don't give permission, then, I mean, our hands are tied. We can only do what, what we legally can do.
Sure, your hands are tied, but the current eleven feet in question, the width of the road is eleven feet, wouldn't it be, it would make more sense to come and say, okay, you don't want it gravelled, or you don't want it widened, you don't want it paved, why don't we just take our asphalt up, and we'll throw down some gravel, and then you can maintain it, and you can close it? And, I mean, that saves the taxpayers money in the long run.
Well, it, it may sound that easy, but it's not that easy.
Well, I've got a, I've got a question, I've asked this question before, and I keep getting answered, that you cannot properly maintain that eleven feet. My question is, how are you properly maintaining, and this is more for Roy, how are you properly maintaining all the other roads around Marshall County? Old Daniel, for one example, Idlewild for another example, and I can bring you a Wilbur list of roads in here that match Walton Lane to the T, to that portion, but recently now, but, but I'm told that mine cannot be maintained because it's not wide enough. That doesn't make any sense to me. Uh, uh, Old Daniel in the Tablesville community is narrower than that, it's about eight feet in most cases. Has anybody been a, you know where I'm talking about?
I'm not more familiar, I've been down Idlewild more than Old Daniel.
Okay, Idlewild is another example, how, how are you, how are you properly maintaining that road? And I have, I have pictures, video on my phone of the county road department recently working on Old Daniel. The culverts have been changed out very recently, there is one house on Old Daniel, it's eight tenths of a mile long, there's one house at the dead end. One, and the county is going out there every year, salting, scraping snow, maintaining it, changing out culverts, working at the intersection of fourteen twenty-two in Old Daniel, and there's one house on it at the dead end, and it's eight feet wide in a lot of spaces, but Walton Lane, that portion that I live on, cannot properly be being maintained for some reason, because it's only eleven feet wide. Can somebody give me a logical answer, Roy, on how, what is the difference?
Well, your road, if I remember right, it's got two banks on each side.
No.
One side.
One side is, at the property lot of Mr. Johnson's, there's a bank, yes, on both sides, and then it, then it, the right side going towards my house flattens up. If I remember right, when we was going down through there and widening the rest of the road, when we was going to go on back, I think someone said about not removing the trees on the side of the road. When we to, when we go in and, and fix a road up, we're, we're putting ditches and what we can to protect the road, to protect the blacktop. Now, the one like on Old Daniel you're talking about replacing culverts, is when you pulled in Old Daniel, the edge of the road right there has fallen off, so we added.
No, I'm, I'm talking about replacing the culverts nearly to the dead end of it. There, there do culverts because they're, the ones that got that black. Yeah, they're black.
They were, they were rusted out bad, and it was causing a problem.
But how could you, how could you properly maintain, it's only eight feet wide? That's, that's my question, but that's the answer that I keep receiving, is because of the width of the portion past Mr. Johnson toward my house, because of the width, it cannot properly be maintained, but there's roads all over Marshall County that are still present day being maintained, that are narrower than that. So, that just tells me that the width cannot be the problem. Can it? If you go eight smaller than eleven, and if eleven's too narrow, eight's really too narrow. So, my question is, I, I mean, I would love to see it closed at the dead end, just to keep Sunday drivers from turning around in my, you know, in front of my house all the time, but I don't believe that any of this should be at my expense.
Uh, is it, uh, it's Old Daniel Drive, right?
Yeah, Old Daniel Drive Road, or.
Yeah, Old Daniel Drive has a twenty-foot right of way. Oh, and it is, uh.
Well, there's a fence right up to the edge of the blacktop.
The width of the road is thirteen foot.
Not in a lot of places, I measured it, it varies up and down through there.
Exactly, it varies, and on every road, it, the width of the road varies everywhere we go. I can't go and measure every single foot of the road. When we go out and run these roads, we just pick a spot here and there, if it looks narrow, it looks wide, we measure them, and we come up with the best we can, and thirteen foot's what we got. So, a thirteen-foot road and a twenty-foot right of way, that gives us a little room two-foot culverts on each side, and maintain a ditch.
So, if y'all need to do roadwork, that, the property owner that has his cattle fence right up to the edge of the blacktop, what's he going, is he going to have to move his fence at his expense, I mean, what goes on there?
If there is an issue with the road right there where the fence was, then that's when I go out and talk to him and ask him if we can move the fence to, to fix it. Years ago, people put fences right on the blacktop, and we got plenty of roads like that in the county, and it is hard for us to maintain.
So, Walton Lane was first blacktopped in the mid to late nineties, and it was blacktopped up to where my driveway is right now, was not a house back there, I didn't own the property, nothing, it was just a thicket back there. If, were these guidelines in place then, as far as the, how to build a road, these specs?
Uh, that, as far as that fact, I don't know.
We're talking about twenty-two, twenty-three years.
I, I, I don't think anyone sitting at this, anyone sitting here would know today, right now, those answers.
Regardless of the history, so the home, the property owner said, okay, no, you can't have my right of way, don't, you can't, you can't have it, okay. The road still belongs to the county, so it's still the county's responsibility to fix what's there. So, if putting blacktop back on it is not an option, obviously, it's not feasible without the culverts and the ditching and the, and the twenty feet, why not fix what's currently there?
We, we.
Say, say, let's get, I'm going to have to get this asphalt up, Mr. Anderson, and we're just going to put gravel back, or a chip and seal, or something to fix the county, because at the end of the day, sir, the county, the road is your responsibility, it's not ours, you know, they said it is, I mean, we can dispute whether or not it's a county road all day long, we can, and somebody will and somebody won't win, but the county road superintendent at the time these discussions started said it's a county road all the way to Mr. and Mrs. Anderson's mailbox, so if it's a county road, it's the county's responsibility to fix it. We would love to close it, I would absolutely be thrilled to, to close it, but is it my taxpayer's responsibility to fix your road?
And, there's a, there's a lot on Walton Lane, and I think we're getting off of the, the public hearings, the intent of the public hearing, like.
The intent of the public hearing is to know what's going on with Walton Lane, and that's why we're here. This is what's going on with Walton Lane.
Now, the public hearing, the petition, is to take the road out of the county maintenance system, or take a road into the county maintenance system. That, that's the authority. No one has the authority to, to grant a road in or out, or, you know, what was discussed.
The road is already in, and there's KRS that says the county shall maintain your road. We all know what the definition shall is. It does, it doesn't say if, if it's to your specs, or if it's your liking, or if it's this white, or it's that white, it simply states in black and white from start to end of the sentence, the county shall maintain the road, period.
We.
It, there's no other, there's no other elaboration to it.
And, and, and we've been through this, Brad, it, it's not that easy with, with Walton Lane. There's a, a whole list of roads in this county that nobody's sitting here to. There's a whole list of roads in this county that nobody sitting here today was involved in. But what we have to maintain, as Roy was saying, is what we've got.
Regardless if you require not, it's still your responsibility as commissioners to know.
I just want folks to know that the road department, with the request from residents on that road to widen it, they went through the process. The landowner.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just talking right there. Why, if there was a request to widen it, and you got signatures for everybody, why weren't her and I not approached?
The, your father was approached as a landowner. And there was to do proper maintenance to widen it and water.
You can't landlock anybody.
Okay, all right. Listen, we've been through this. I don't know how long we've talked in my office about this. I would love to wave a magic wand and make this go away, or fix the problems. But it's not that easy. It's just not. The best process was to petition the court through a public hearing.
Well, how easy would it be for the court, for us just to come in and say, hey, we'll close it, and then you guys can wash your hands of it, and your responsibility to the taxpayers is completely eliminated? That does seem like the easiest option to me, sir. I do, I don't disagree with you, and if I were sitting in your seat, that's exactly what I would want. But, I think that each of us here understand that we are residents back there. The road is the, is the responsibility of the county to maintain. So, if the homeowner, or if the landowner won't agree to give you 20 feet, you do have to make the road passable for the people who live back there.
And you and I talked about this. The, your father-in-law doesn't see it that way. He does not want the county road on his property. I can't, I'm not a landowner.
It's already there.
It's not his property, though. You just, the, this court.
11 feet of it, y'all say belong to you.
This court has said it belongs to the county. The county road superintendent of this court said, or of this county said, that that is a county road. So, I mean, Terry Anderson doesn't have the ability to keep.
Roy, what's the, on that portion of the 575 feet, as you used the example earlier, a 20-foot right-of-way, is there a right-of-way on the 575 feet that we're discussing?
What we have in our book.
There is the term ditch to ditch. And when we talk about an asset, and we've talked about this, the county, it is an asset. We inherited, as elected officials, we inherited all the assets. The ass, the interest of the county is the asphalt. And as we've talked, when you have water issues, water is probably one of the most detrimental things to a roadway, to properly maintain it. The term that I've always been told is ditch to ditch. When the request came in to take it all the way out to 11 feet, we have to go to all those property owners, and you guys know this, to get permission, to get the required right-of-way that's needed to properly maintain it. If no one would have signed anything, we'd have been stuck with, you know, what we had. But, do you have, if there's a right-of-way?
We have in the book, it's 40-foot right-of-way, .24 miles down 60. Is what we have.
Or from 641?
From 641, yeah. And then, there's a common with 24-foot.
So, I mean, it's, as far as the public hearing today.
Judge, this public hearing, we've been fighting this battle for months, and I believe this public hearing today was to try to push that through, where the monkey's off everybody's back. Mr. Darnold gave us the option a few minutes ago to withdraw. We withdraw, this discussion will continue for a later date. But, I'm wanting everybody to understand what we have out there. We have Walton Lane, which is 11 feet wide, according to the measurements, that the county says belongs to the county road department. All right? So, y'all can bring Terry Anderson's name up all you want to, but if that holds true, if that 11 feet belongs to the county, he doesn't have a dog in the race. He has no more authority to tell you to stay off that 11-foot wide strip than he does Old Daniel Drive, or Idlewild, or any other road in the county. He can kick and scream all he wants to. So, what he can do is not give you the right-of-way that y'all are wanting. So, like I said, my suggestion was years ago, whenever they came in and built that road, if they wanted the right-of-way, they should have taken it then. They did not. I have no idea why. All I know is according to Mr. Darnold and Wendy Greer, that that road belongs to Marshall County Road Department. Right now, as it sits. Which means that I, myself, and her, who live at the dead end of this, it doesn't affect my father directly. He doesn't live on it, he doesn't have to negotiate the minefield that we do. That, that belongs to the county road department, and the county road department shall maintain their roads. Period. It doesn't say if you like the width, or anything about that. It doesn't say anything about ditches. Water's, last time I looked, water does not stand on top of a hill, it will run off. And that's the crown of the hill. Water will not pond on it. So, we are taxpaying citizens that live at the dead end of a county road, who the county road splits my father's property. Lucky me. All right? Why am her and I having to suffer the consequences of somebody else's griefs? If he don't give the right-of-way, if the property owner won't give the right-of-way, so that means that the other resident, a resident lives on that road has to suffer. Let's pretend it's not me and Terry Anderson. Let's pretend it's over here in Benton somewhere, and it's Joe Bob Smith and Paul. Should Paul suffer because Joe Bob won't give the county a right-of-way on both sides of the road? How is that his fault? But he's the one suffering. He's the one getting the oil pan knocked in the bottom of his new car. He's the one that sliced in the sidewall out with that new tire, cost him four new tires because you can't match it up. He's the one's got pieces of plastic hanging off, and Joe Bob in the corner is the one's arguing about it. That's not right. Why should he suffer? The county built the road in the first place, on their own. It was not by my request, I didn't live back there. It was not by my father's request. In fact, he was very disturbed, he was upset, and he came home one day, and there's a blacktop road running across the property to the backside of his property. It was, there was trouble enough with people going back there poaching, so now they got a blacktop road, and they get there easier. But the blacktop road's there. I purchased property, moved it to the dead end of it. It was maintained by the county for over 20 years. Till all of a sudden, I drive home from work one day, and there's a sign up that says, "End of county maintenance." And we're left with a mess that I think everybody is aware of that's out there. Why should her and I suffer because of somebody else? It's a county road, according to him and Wendy Greer. It, period. Right, Jason? Is that what you told me? It's a county road. Walton Lane to my mailbox, I can bring the mail up. According to you, it's a county road right up to that point.
That's why we're here on a petition to close it?
Yes.
That's fine. But, I want to use this microphone for right now, because this has been over a year-long battle that I could not get an answer out of anybody from, until Mr. Neal had to, took the time out of his day for about two hours in his office a few weeks ago. But, we haven't got to talk to Mr. Lamb, I haven't got to talk to Monty, I ain't got to talk to Kevin very much. But we have a county road. Walton Lane is a county road, according to your county attorney and your former road superintendent. What, your opinion, Roy, is it a county road right now, up to my driveway?
No, whatever the road.
Is it a county road up to my driveway, present day? Look up the law. And see what the law says the county shall do with their roads. Not an option, not if it's this wide, not if it has ditches, not if there's a tree in the way. It just, what you shall do. I challenge you, look up the law, and I'm gonna request you, I'm gonna request you, and I'm gonna request you to give me a phone call. You got an ink pen? Please take down my number. I would like a phone call in no less than seven days from each one of you. Is that fair? I would like for y'all to look up the law, the KRS, that says what you shall do with the county road. And please get back to me. Now, her and I are tired of suffering. We need some help, we need something done. We just need what's right to be done. It's not my fault the road was built at 11 feet. It's not. That's the county road department and whoever was in charge then. But that's the way it is. If the property owner refuses right-of-way, then you, in my eyes, in my opinion, in my understanding of that law, you shall maintain it. So, please, look that up, give me your interpretation of it, what y'all think, and what if y'all lived at the dead end of it? And please, get back to me within seven days or less, please. Because we are desperate and in need of help. And y'all are the only ones that can help us. And I'm done.
Thank you. So, as far as meeting the statutory requirement of those, here for or against? This is a new one for me. They were originally for, now they're withdrawing.
Yeah, so they've made their position clear. We've heard, we've heard from their position, so we just need to make sure if there's nobody else here speaking for or against.
Or against, so. I had asked first time, yes. Is there anybody here for Walton Lane petition to be taken out of the county maintenance system? It's the second request, is there anybody here for Walton Lane to be taken out of the county maintenance system? Is there anybody here for, or is there anybody here against? We know the Andersons are now are against their own petition. Is there anybody here against the petition for Walton Lane to be taken out of the county maintenance system? Third time, is there anybody here against Walton Lane to be taken out of the county maintenance system?
We are, if the chairman is here again.
Meets the statutory requirement? Okay. All right. We will go out of the public hearing. Got motion on that? Okay. Item H, executive session. Executive session is for personnel and litigation.
We going in executive session?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
In regards to the executive session, employee James Russell Wilson, who is a county employee, the recommendation was termination. In our admin code, when an employee is terminated, the employee can appeal to the fiscal court. So, Mr. Wilson has appealed to the fiscal court. So, the fiscal court had to discuss the actual termination, and that's where we're at right now. So, with the discussions that we have had, we need to take action on this termination letter that was submitted. And I'll just read this for the record. Okay. So, this is dated October 23rd, 2020. To Jay Russell Wilson. Mr. Wilson, this letter is notifying you of the intent to dismiss you from employment at Marshall County Road Department with the Marshall County Fiscal Court. You may request to respond within five working days of the receipt of this letter of intent to dismiss, excluding the day it is received. If you do not submit a request within five working days, it will be deemed that you have waived your right to respond. If you do submit your request to respond, a meeting with the fiscal court shall be held at the next scheduled fiscal court meeting, unless it is within five days of said meeting. May reschedule said meeting upon notice of good cause. This meeting is informal and gives you the opportunity to respond to this letter of intent to dismiss. Within five working days, excluding the day of the meeting, the fiscal court shall make a final determination on the termination. You will be notified in writing of the fiscal court's decision by me, and the decision of the fiscal court is final. Please feel free to contact my office with any questions. Sincerely, Brad Warning, Deputy Judge. The actual incident was, what day was that? It was the 23rd, 22nd. The, while working the patcher over in Moores, the employee then went over to one of our day-use parks and sprayed the remaining, would it be fair to say, oil that is in the patcher, off into TVA property, which a resident had witnessed the events. TVA got involved, there was an investigation, and we were made aware that it was actually our own people that had done this. So, through that, the road supervisor notified the deputy judge, and per our admin code, the recommendation of termination was made. So, Mr. Wilson has elected to appeal. That's why we went into executive session, and that's where we're at right now. So, what we have in front of us is a termination of the employee, and the employee is appealing. I believe, the way the admin code is written, we don't have the negotiation of other time off or anything. It's, we have to deal with the termination, recommendation of termination. And he has been terminated for over two weeks now? 23rd was his first day of termination?
Eighteen days.
Yeah. So, we need to take action on this request of termination.
Well, obviously, we have been in, I don't know what time we went into executive session, but it's been a while. And so, we've had a lot of discussion about that, that we won't necessarily go into. But I will say, it was obviously a difficult decision, or we wouldn't have been in there that long. And so, I will make the motion that we uphold the termination of the employee.
Second? I will second that motion. Vote on the termination of Mr. James Russell Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Nay.
Motion ties. We were briefed with a 2-2 tie in regards to a termination appeal. Mr. Wilson will return to work immediately. Correct?
Correct.
No further discussion. We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.